Alright, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Keachai City Council meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. It is now seven o'clock, and we're gonna go ahead and get started. Debbie, could you please come in?
Paul Dwyer.
Here.
Paul Hestrom.
Here.
James Walden.
Here.
Here.
Alright, if everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to approving tonight's agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's agenda? I know we will have an executive session for ten minutes for returning client privilege. Matt, any changes?
No, ma'am.
Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A move we approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
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 Carrie's four oh. Move on to the next item, which is approving of the consent agenda for this evening. Any questions, counsel, on tonight's consent agenda? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Motion by Matt, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four oh. Move on to communication. Keachai Civic Group slash Committees. Um, I guess I can give a little bit of an update on the Keachai Fair Committee. Um, we did have a meeting last week. We did not have any new members, um, come to the meeting. But we do have a new president and a new, well, I guess Chair and Vice Chair. Um, Jared is our Vice, or our Chair, and Brett Coleman is the Vice Chair. So congratulations to the both, and I'm sure they will help the fair grow and continue throughout our time. We will miss Emily dearly though. So we'll move on to Keachai Good News. If you have any Keachai good news, I'll ask counsel first, and then I'll go from there. Okay, so Keachai Good News, so, um, so today was the last day for the honorary mayor for a day, so I just wanna say thank you to, uh...
You did get one.
I did, yes.
I got, I actually got three.
Okay.
So I got three people who, uh, signed up, so I will be emailing all of those to council so that we can decide who is going to be the honorary mayor for a day over spring break. So I believe that's March twenty, uh, no, sixteenth, sorry. Thirteenth? March thirteenth, sorry, March thirteenth.
Let's do the fifteenth, I mean, whatever that gives.
So I believe it's the thirteenth. We'll make sure and get that out to the winner especially, so they can come and be a part of our day. So, um, also, I want to say that... My brain is not working, I'm very sorry. I had it all written down, and I forgot to bring one. I guess we're gonna move on, and if I come back to it, I'll figure it out. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Alright, we will close public comment for the evening and move on to old business. We have no old business, we'll move on to new business. Council President Appointment.
Do you want me to jump in here?
Sure.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the, um, council members that selected me as council president in twenty twenty-two and again in twenty twenty-three. I've, um, been privileged to represent them as the president of the council. Um, but going forward in twenty twenty-four, um, I'd like to nominate council member Todd Hestrom to serve as our council president.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Matt and a second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
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 You can vote.
You accept it on the way in?
Well, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess do you wanna accept your nomination? But I didn't really give you a choice there. Well, congratulations, Todd, and thank you so much, Matt, for your dedicated service. We will now move on to the council member appointment. Don't have the motion in front of me, does somebody have a copy of, or what I need to say? To be able to do that?
Should be at the bottom of your summary sheet.
Uh, on the summary sheet.
I hereby appoint Karen Wienerstein?
Wiederstein.
Wieterstein, sorry. To the office of council member and submit such appointment to the council for advice and consent. I just wanna say thank you so much, Karen, for your interview. And thank you to all of the applicants who did submit their resume and come in for an interview. It was a long night, but thank you all very much, and thank you so much. So, counsel, um, I would entertain a motion.
What was the one? You want me to?
Yes.
Okay, I hereby move to consent to the appointment of Karen Wiederstein, Wiederstein?
We'll get it, we promise.
To the office of council member.
So, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion for Karen.
Motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four oh. Congratulations, Karen. And I believe she now takes the oath of office.
She does, yeah. Karen, if you wanna come up here and, or city clerk, you will administer the oath to you.
Would you like me to repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
The State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, thank you.
Karen, you have the choice for whichever side you wanna settle, because you are gonna be uneven in my village.
I'll pick the closest.
There you go. We will move on to the oath of office for Officer Shannon Shanahan.
Would you like me to repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Officer Shanahan, I know that I'm putting you on the spot, but would you like to introduce your family to us?
Yeah. I know, Chief Moore, thank you for actually accepting me. It's a pleasure being here, um, coming from Newton, but a big thanks to my wife. She had to deal with a lot, leaving Newton and coming here, so it's a big adjustment. Um, my two kids, Riley and Kelly, keep doing what you're doing. You're making me and her mom never stop, so keep doing it. I love you, Jess. Um, thank you, Lieutenant Meyer, for dealing with me the last week and a half. I'm sure I've been giving him a plenty of a headache, and Chief Moore for bringing me in. I mean, he's been treating me like a family from day one, even before I was even hired, so appreciate that, sir. Thank you. It's good to be here, and I can't wait to serve the community of Keachai, so thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. We'll move on to council reports, just any council members have a report they'd like to do. Matt, I will give mine. So I, I have had less of an intense few weeks than, uh, the last time we met. Um, I, Matt and I did have the opportunity to go to SCAC, or the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, last Saturday. Um, that was, um, a very interesting meeting. They talked about the solar referendum, moratorium, I can never remember the actual word.
Kind of both.
Uh, yeah, uh, Sedgwick County has on, uh, solar and what they're looking to do with their zoning for that in the unincorporated areas. Um, so if you have an opportunity to learn more about that, um, I would highly recommend, or I can give a further update later on. I don't feel like this is probably the best time for that. Um, we also, uh, had the opportunity, well, I did, to be able to go to the African American Museum, um, which is right next to the Sedgwick County Jail. And that was a really interesting, um, tour and to see all the history and what they are looking to do with their capital project. They are looking to move downtown, um, to a bigger building and being able to, uh, display all of the artifacts that they have. And so they're, they're trying to raise six million dollars. They have five of the six million dollars, so they're on that last push. So if you know anybody who's interested in helping out with that project, please, uh, go out and help them. Um, we also went to the Chili Cook-Off up in Sunnydale, Matt and I and Brett. Uh, so I spent a lot of time with Matt last Saturday. Um, we went and interacted with all the Sunnydale residents who were able to attend, and that was a really great time and some really good food. Uh, I went to REEP today, and I listened to a lot of, um, technology that Valley Center is doing. They have an app, and so they were showing us how to use that. Um, so that was a really interesting, uh, conversation to have. That's my own report. Next, we have staff reports.
Mayor and counsel, we'll start with public works. Uh, this is the first month we will start departmental reports, so, uh, Thomas?
Mayor.
Your first step.
So it's kinda weird, 'cause it's only, you know, from all the way through January yet, but, uh, so far this month, uh, we're at meters, start of the month, that takes about three days. Uh, we can, do you need work on relocating the gas, uh, the gas line for the downtown project? Um, I know on this paper that I have fifteen hundred feet. Um, we, uh, installed another five hundred feet just yesterday, or before. So currently about two thousand feet. We almost have the southeast, uh, section of town done, as remains. Hopefully, the rain and snow and everything else will hold up. We'll get some of that sunny weather that they're talking about. That way, we can, uh, finish the mains and then start reconnecting people's services over there. Um, hopefully, to have that done by the end of February, for sure. That way, we can stay on pace to get the downtown project done. Um, the question, cleared snow for two storm, uh, storm events already, um, this year. Uh, marked the flag over thirty locates. Um, graded the roads twice already this year. I was just talking to Matt about that earlier. We only graded the roads three or four times the last year, or two combined. So we're already on pace to, to, uh, outpace the, the previous two years. Um, so we've also been in the lift station to fix it twice this year. So if we could get people to stop flushing things down the toilet that they don't need to be flushing, um, those pumps are about twelve thousand dollars now. So we've been down there twice this year, um, already to fix that. Um, then we spent about two days during the time that it was raining, uh, recertifying and butt fusion, saddle fusion, electrofusion for gas bike. Um, we, that's just a portion of, uh, about forty certifications that we have to do every year and three years. So that's just another report from us right now.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Any questions for public works? So I have one quick question, Thomas. Sure. So, uh, at the lift station, the pumps, when you had to repair them, have you had to replace them at twelve thousand dollars each, or?
No, um, currently, what, what's happening is we're getting a lot of stuff tangled up around the floats. It's causing the, the pumps to act crazy, so, uh...
But the pumps haven't burned out, or?
No, um, we're really fortunate, we have some pretty new pumps. That we've currently bought. We actually have one extra now, just because of all the problems we've had out of it the last few years. Thankfully for us, uh, enough states sued, um, so wet wipes are no longer, if you read them, most of them say do not flush anymore, because at one time they were like flushable, they're fighting, and they're not. They get stuck in those, uh, those teeth and those shredders, and it just causes a big problem. Uh, the other big portion we have is hair. For some reason, I don't know, we end up with lots of hair. Um, you know, people would put that in the trash and not, you know, out of their brushes or whatever, but what happens is those floats, they turn up, up and down, and there's two, there's basically magnesium in there, and so, or mercury in there, so when they hit, they make those connections like a car battery. Um, when they can't turn over or flip, um, we actually had both of our pumps, uh, turned over nine hundred times in less than twenty-four hours. Usually, they only turn on thirty. So what happened was they got stuck, and they were shifting every three, every three minutes. Um, and when I talked to the pump guys that answered, we were guys sharing the lucky. So, just a, just a heads up and a...
Thomas, I can't resist, the hair is not coming from you.
Hasn't for about twenty years, so... But...
So that surprises me, that, 'cause I would think that would be all, uh, an ongoing thing. I mean, that's just life, that you're just gonna be, um...
Yeah, well, it's also the holiday season, we see a lot more grease getting pumped down the drain, too.
Okay.
So the grease and the hair all combine together. Um, it wraps around, you know, usually, we're, we're down there and unclog the floats and, and things once a week, you know, we're, you know, there two, three times. And, uh, for some reason, this year, has, uh, got a little more than normal, so...
Well, just that we talked about this ongoing, and I don't know, communication wise, how, I know that you guys communicate in the...
It will actually be in the way of next time.
Okay, okay.
I typically pick it this time of year, because this is what we are experiencing this time of year, so...
I mean, we, we see all kinds of things, uh, diabetic needles. Um, we have to watch out for those and be careful for those when we're down there. For some reason, diabetic needles get flushed. Um, uh, last time, we actually pulled a bath towel. We pulled a full towel out of, out of the bottom of it. Don't ask me how that got flushed down there.
I was just saying, it's amazing it got from there.
I mean, I've seen rubber duckies floating, I mean, it's amazing, oh, what, it can get flushed down those, those toilets, so... Um, you know, if, if, if it's not supposed to be in there, please just, you know, find a trash can for it.
Thanks for extra information, I just, that's my...
Not that anybody wanted that information.
My curiosity, curiosity more than...
Any, any concerns on the schedule with, uh, gas pipe and the intersection project?
Um, no, not currently, not currently. Um, I was actually surprised that PEC didn't have the, the downtown project done yet and the finals done for it. Um, they were able to give us some depths for shooting our gas across. That was one of my biggest concerns, was that, uh, we didn't know how deep or it needed to be. And I didn't wanna have to redo the gas after I'd already shot it across. Um, 'cause I do know there's portions of the gas line that were replaced in two thousand seventeen that we, they will have to go back and, and, uh, shoot any deeper, so...
Have they given us a recovery plan on when they can get back to schedule? 'Cause it seems like they're kind of running behind on some of the deliverables they owe us.
I'll have to ask them that, yeah, I don't know. We have monthly meetings, and things seem to be pretty on track.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but I'll follow up if you don't have... Thanks, Thomas, appreciate it.
Counselor Mayor, thank you for having, uh, me up here to do the updates. I really kind of enjoyed this moment to be in front of you and kind of give you an idea of what we're, what we're working on. Um, as we mentioned at the last council meeting, we're finally fully staffed. Excuse me, um, I've been in the office for eight months, and I can tell you, it's not me, it's our officers that are out there every day, working hard, putting the word out there that we're, we're great agency, we got a good thing going for us, that has created the draw that, that came in. Um, you know, we were able to offer, uh, Officer Shanahan a position, and, uh, he, he accepted. Um, he wasn't gonna brag on himself, so I will a little bit. Uh, he came from, uh, Newton PD with seven years law enforcement experience there. Prior to that, like, he has fifteen years of military between the Air Force and, uh, the United States Army. Um, he's experienced MP and been combat, combat deployed four times. So, a decorated officer, uh, a man who's, uh, one of courage and integrity, and I think he's gonna do us, do us well. So, uh, having that, that application come through, we're appreciative. And so we're, we're there, we're staffed. You're gonna see a lot of us around, we're gonna be patrolling. That's allowed us to, uh, get another position going, a detective patrol position, which will let us put some resources for some investigatory stuff that needs to be taken care of here in town, so... Definitely moving forward. Those steps forward also include, uh, we're looking into congressional funding, uh, for a grant. Uh, I'm looking at the ballpark of maybe two hundred fifty thousand, if I can land it. Uh, that'll be through Senator Moran's office. I've been in touch with his secretary, she's supposed to let me know as soon as he gets clearance from, uh, the United States, uh, government on, on that dollar amount. Last year was forty-seven million dollars, I believe, fifteen million dollars. That guy just, just featured across Kansas law enforcement agencies. Uh, my ideas in, in talking to the city for that money would be to get generators to operate this building and also the police department, maybe even public works if they need it. Uh, with us being a, uh, location for, um, FEMA and others that, you know, if we have a natural disaster up here, we're gonna have to have power, so that will benefit the state in that, in that realm. Um, we're looking at a drone for city and police operations, both. The drones that are available to us have infrared, they also have night vision. Uh, so in case of a water break, a gas break, uh, anything like that, where we don't wanna put personnel in harm's way, we can, we can deploy a drone and get it, uh, with the ability to shoot video, zoom in, get all the information there, as well as police operations, obviously, we get somebody on foot, um, that kind of thing. Oftentimes, we're up north helping out with Boys Ranch and the, the Girls Ranch up there, they get runaways a lot, and in times of the essence, especially when it's cold out like it has been. And so those drones are invaluable, would be used so many times to, to locate children who are, you know, distressed and running away and not understanding the elements and what it's gonna do, so... That's gonna be a big purchase. Uh, Axon dash cameras, uh, to facilitate with our, uh, body cams that all interlink. Right now, our cameras link up with our Taser system, so if we draw a Taser, our dash, our body cam automatically kicks on. Um, so that technology's there. Furthermore, that technology being integrated into patrol cars with that new system, that if we draw a, uh, a Taser, dash cam kicks on, everything's automated, uh, so it's a, it's a good system. And then access controls and cameras for all city buildings. Um, right now, we're still running off the key system, and, uh, we need to upgrade our security camera system. So that, I'm waiting on a, on a bid from a company, uh, Verkata, out of, uh, California. They've done a site, site check, a couple of things, so I should have a bid on them in about a month. So as soon as this congressional spending gets cleared up, those are the items I'm putting on it, I'm sending it over, and, um, we'll see how it shakes out. So I'm, I'm feeling confident about it, uh, after talking to the head secretary, and, and so... That's gonna be one of the big steps we're gonna do. Um, the community policing initiative through the Oprah Grant, uh, we received some Oprah funds last year, a little over six thousand dollars worth. So we're gonna use that to springboard our community policing program this year. Uh, we're gonna do some great things. Uh, one of the things will be movie in the park. Uh, we're gonna invest in a inflatable movie screen, a projector, a computer barbecue grill, a popcorn machine, uh, with this, this funding. Uh, we'll also have a, uh, the police department tent set up there as well. Obviously, the one pill can kill campaign is, is going strong, and we're seeing the effects of that. It's, uh, the Oprah crisis is hitting our community hard, and when I say our community, it's everywhere. Uh, it was just, I believe it was three, four days ago, there was a high school student that went down. Um, her pulse was leaving her body, she was, she was go blue, wasn't breathing, they airbagged her can of barre back. We know what was in her system, and it's hitting our kids, so we're gonna, we're gonna take that funding, we're investing in our community for our kids, uh, our families. We'll have movie park, uh, new movie night at the park every, every month, and we'll do popcorn, we'll do hot dogs and bratwursts, that'll be free to the community, the police department will be out there, and, uh, we'll just spend some time with the kids and the families and, and try to help them understand how dangerous this really is. We really, really got to do something. I think it's gonna start here. Um, kind of closing out the year, last year, um, coming in with eight months, you know, when I, when I started, we had two patrolmen, myself, um, trying to, you know, just get the agency going. We were able to do that, we closed out the year with, uh, I have to estimate it, because we brought on board the Tyler system to keep track of our calls. So right now, we're around two thousand, twenty-five hundred calls for service last year. We wrote, uh, a little over three hundred tickets in that timeframe, and we're continuing to see an uptick in, in cases and, uh, and staying busy. And being fully staffed will just, uh, keep us pushing that, that direction as well, so... Uh, any of your staffs are looking good, we're, we're gonna be busy this year, so we're just getting prepared for that. And that's the fourth, so, any questions? Yes?
Did I miss you say, uh, an estimated time on the funds from person at Moran's?
Yes, so I, I believe they're supposed to announce, uh, the funding level this month. Now, it's the United States government, so we're, we're just kind of at their mercy. Uh, my window, what I was told, was between January and March to get everything submitted. So once I get those word, that word, I'm, I'm hitting the ground with a computer and trying to get everything settled, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. Uh, reached out to Caterpillar, I'm still waiting on a bid from them for the two generators, but my idea is to have those in hand as soon as that, that money hits, and then we just, in our back work and, and hopefully be ahead of the curve on that, so... That sounds promising, so we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you very much, Chief.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Any planning, testing? Hi, um, zoning, we've had one case presented and one case recessed in, for the planning commission. Uh, one case presented to city council earlier this month. Uh, communication and information is being passed to developers for vacant lots, but no paperwork has been submitted, so anything is just rumors at this point, but a lot of communication for some vacant lots. Uh, code enforcement, follow-up on cases from twenty twenty-three are being conducted. No new cases so far. And stormwater, there's seed packets for native plants out in the lobby on the counter. Help people start a native grass, uh, flower bed or something to help it toward stormwater when that comes. And the twenty twenty-three report for the MS four, uh, permit is being conducted to be, uh, turned in by the end of February. Anybody have any questions on any of those?
Same, I don't know.
Excellent.
I just don't see why.
And last but not least, administration, so, uh, Teresa, myself and Debbie will take any questions you guys have. A lot of stuff's been covered that we've kind of worked on this month. Um, most of our stuff here at City Hall has been focused on year-end closeouts, especially on the financial side. Teresa's been working along with that, Debbie's been working a lot on that. Um, we did have a meeting with the majority of the staff here at City Hall over a new phone system. It was a demo. Um, as you know, last week, our phone system went down. It's a pretty old system. The service that can be provided on it is just not available anymore. Uh, the technology's old, so we really need to start looking at a new phone system. It's gonna be an expense, but that's something we complain for, so that's why we're starting now. And it got our attention last week when it went down, and we were hoping it didn't give up the ghost for good, but it came back, and Teresa got it up and running with some help from, I think, DLS, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so for now, it's good. Um, like Thomas said, he and I met with PEC about some of the, uh, roadway construction Oliver and Keachai rode there, and that meeting was, just talked about the utilities, like he said, the depths of those utilities, where they are, so Thomas can come in and get his gas stuff put in there, um, to get ready for that, so... Um, we talked about my monthly meeting with Bel Air last month, so I won't cover that. No new developments on that front. Uh, the police department this month was switched over to KTNF, uh, from Capers. Uh, Teresa, you have anything to add on that?
That was not fun.
That was my question.
Well, it's, you know, new, whenever you put in new something into your system, um, there's little pickups and things, so we... It's, it went through... um, there's little pickups and things, so we, it's, it went through mostly without a hitch, just little, nothing that wasn't fixable. Um, learning curve on something, we, if lunch or discovery or something else in our financial or in our, uh, payroll software, that's nothing, nothing's wrong. It's just not, um, giving the information on employees' payroll stuff or pay stuffs that we would want to see. So, we'll get that addressed, that just came out today, actually, so. It's doing everything properly, just not before me as well as you'd like.
And, uh, all employees receive their annual reviews, um, so that was a big process for all department heads. Uh, but those are all done. Uh, Teresa attended the January Kechai Arts Council meeting. Do you wanna speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, this last month, or this month, uh, the Arts Council actually took a field trip to Gruber Labs, um, one of our, the members and that, and he's a resident here, that's where he works. And so, we got to tour it. I had no idea what it was. He's actually the one who, um, the tiles that we made or handmade for, uh, Brian and Richard Outgoing. He actually made those at the lab. Um, they have everything from office space to podcast space to art studios, woodworking, metal lathes, welding shops, uh, computer components. They were putting them together as part of a project and they're, it's all a nonprofit business that helps startup businesses, so, um, Ken was there and Vaughn was there. And it was really interesting to see that that's what somebody here is doing and just some of the, the unique things that he's been able to create and the people that come through there. And that was, um, like I said, really educational and kinda inspirational 'cause, um, it kinda made you go, huh, there's some things that we might be able to utilize. But it was, it was really, it was really fascinating.
Um, they also have three D printers.
Yes.
Huge three D printers. I was very fascinated.
Yeah, and just some of the, the robotics that they were working on for some companies that they come with ideas, they've had a, a, a robot that is a weed picker. So, for, for in between crops, it just goes down the roads and grows and picks the weed or cuts down weeds in between the plants so that the plants can grow healthier. And just some of the technology and stuff. And just that, all of this is just, it's downtown on St. Francis Street. I had no idea, it was pretty cool. But that was, that was one thing. I'm glad I get to be, um, liaison to the Arts Council.
Thank you, Teresa. Uh, our court docket is steadily increasing and, uh, I was told by Chief that this past court docket that we had was one of the largest that we've had. So, that tells us that our police department is out there doing what they need to do and, um, making those, those needed arrests or citations in our community to keep everybody safe, so. Um, although a big docket is, could be good, could be bad. I would bet it was a good thing because they're out there being active in the, in the force in our lots.
And January is usually our biggest docket because we don't have court in December. So, it's the, it's a rough one for her though, to have to go without one for a month and then come back and have all of them.
Uh, like the mayor said, uh, she and I have attended several meetings, uh, this month. The K two fifty-four corridor meeting was held here in Kechai. Uh, super turnout, I think we had probably thirty-five people, uh, from different cities show up here. Um, a lot of information exchanged. Kind of the purpose of the two fifty-four corridor, uh, development committee, um, was originally started to increase safety on the two fifty-four corridor and has kind of evolved into some other things. Um, but it's still, the focus of it is safety, to reduce those fatalities along two fifty-four because it's just, it gets busier and busier and busier and those crossovers are so dangerous. So, a lot of stuff going on there. Um, they continually make improvements out there with roadway markings and signage. And eventually, in the future, down the road, we're probably gonna see some interchanges and overpasses at those high volume intersections, so. Um, good to keep on top of that, especially with our location here. The Sunnydale Chili Feed, um, I thought it was just gonna be a chili feed, but it was a chili cook-off. So, we got a sample of the, I don't know, where they probably have six or eight different chilies and...
Five, five or six chilies and then four soups.
And then four soups and everything on the side, so. I have never been up to the Sunnydale community center up there and I don't know if you had, Mayor, but it's really kinda cool. It's been there since the early nineteen hundreds and they gave us some history on it, but you walk into the building and it's kinda, it's just kinda open seating, has a little kitchen area and then it has a stage. And there's a curtain down over the stage with hand painted sponsors on it, um, from over the years. And I guess they used to have plays there like once a month or something like that. Uh, but a lot, a lot of history up there. I never realized that that went on, so it was really neat to visit those people up there and, and see what goes on. Uh, but they have, uh, here in a couple of months, uh, pie contest or?
Yeah, it's March night.
Yeah, pie raffle.
Pie raffle.
So, uh, we'll put out some information if anybody can go to that. It's, it's really neat, so we had a good time. Um, and then last night and over this week, we have been working with PEC. Uh, we hosted the community stakeholder meeting last night, uh, which kinda helped. It's gonna help update our, uh, two thousand and forty plan, um, update that plan and, uh, give us a little more direction on where we need to go. So, earlier this week, myself and PEC met with, uh, some community stakeholders, which consisted of our local businesses and got input from them. We will meet with another round of businesses in February, uh, talk to them to get their visions and input and then several other community meetings too, so. Uh, lots going on in this little town and, um, as you can see from staff, they are just busy all the time and, uh, everybody works so hard here, so you should be proud of them. And that's all I have.
Any questions, Council? All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
Matt, any, any concern with the court docket going forward now with our police staff?
Uh, it's probably going to increase, yeah, that's, I think that's a given, but I don't know that we, we have any issues, um, everything can be handled.
Yeah, we're, we're setting, we're setting okay as far as the, the physical court itself and, and getting people through, it's, it's an efficient process. Uh, but we are expecting a, dare I say, significant, but an uptick this year for sure with, um, some of the development that Park City's got going. Again, this is a back road thoroughfare and that's what's keeping us busy, so. You know, we're just, just ready to go.
And one thing I will bring to Council each quarter is an update from the courts. Just kind of the, the volume and activities, uh, caseload and things like that. So, nothing you need to really see every month, but a quarterly snapshot is a good way to look at it. So, you can kinda track that a little bit.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the executive session. Um, we'll wait one second, okay?
Uh, how long do we?
Ten.
Ten minutes? Hold on, ten minutes? Yeah, ten's good. So, we get back here at seven...
Forty-six.
Seven forty-six, alright. Madam Mayor, I move, move, we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during the executive session is attorney-client privilege. The set justification for closing the meeting is discussion related to attorney-client privilege matters. And the time and place at which the open meeting shall resume is seven forty-six PM in the council chamber.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Matt, all in favor, say aye.
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 Harry's five oh, we're in executive session.
...